Good evening, everyone. It is August 12th. Welcome to the town of Rhinebeck, August 12th Town Board meeting. Would everybody please stand for the judge?
Aye.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one way is under the word of liberty and justice for all. Okay, I guess the first announcement we have is that there's a long-term closure on South Mill Road, which is County Route 85, and it's just south of Lidwood, where the Ursuline nuns are, to just pass the front entrance to Lidwood to the back. And the road has fallen about nine to 10 feet. I don't know if you've driven up there. You don't have to because it's a disaster. Bob Wyatt and I met with Bob Altine, the county DPW, to look at it. They're hiring an engineer to do a study to see what the underlying cause is. And then we'll know if the county is going to be able to fix it, if it's going to have to be closed and dead-ended. We don't know. There is one person who lost water infrastructure because of that. I'm working with the county, Duchess County Water and Wastewater Authority, to get her hooked up. And her infrastructure that was destroyed during the collapse replaced. And we want to make sure that she's taken care of. So we're monitoring.
I've been like that for years, I can tell you.
This is, this is literally a 10-foot collapse and fall. It's-
It happened many, many, many years ago, too. That's why there's always dirt there.
Alan can tell you, he's pulled all the records.
Yeah, I looked at the county records going back to the 80s, and they've known about this problem since then.
And before then, because when the Chevrolet garage used to be where GTs is and stuff, the guy that worked there lived right on that house at the top of that hill. I can't take this in.
Okay, well, we're monitoring. They're hiring an engineer, and we should have some information as to what, how much, when, by October. May I have a motion to approve the town board meeting minutes from July 8th, 2024?
So move.
Thank you, Chauncey. May I have a second? Thank you, Alan. Any corrections or comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. I just wanted to let you all know that Chad is on vacation with his young son, and it was booked before he knew what the schedule was. So we do have a forum, and we can get it done, hopefully, without him. Have fun, Chad. We still have a public hearing open on Tag 1 Local Law to amend our short-term rental local laws. It's continued from July 8th. We do have a new draft of the law. And what we have done here is, in addition to what we passed in June, Joni?
Yeah.
We have allowed me two changes. And the two changes that we are making here is it has to be your primary residence. You have to be on-site to rent out. You have to have a permit. You can rent out a room in your house. You can rent out an in-law apartment, or you can rent out an accessory dwelling. You do have, it does have to be your primary residence, and you do have to live there and be on-site. That because we don't want unregulated hotels. What we have allowed here is short-term rentals on properties within a certified New York State Agricultural District as defined in Article 25AA in the New York State Agricultural and Markets Law, on which a farm defined in this code in Section 301 of the New York State Agricultural and Markets Law is being operated, commonly known as farm stays. We have about a dozen farms in Rhinebeck. Some of them are on multi-properities. The owner will live on multi-contingent properties. The owner will live on one property and have an accessory dwelling on another property. We want to support events and agroturism. We want to support farms, so we want to make an allowance for short-term rentals to be on farms that are in the agricultural district and have an act exemption. The other change is that there were two short-term rental properties that were basically accessory dwellings of the owner's primary residence. However, they were on separately deeded pieces of property contingent with the owners. Instead of making them do a costly, and I think there's only two instances of this, block line adjustment or merger, we want them to be allowed to rent them out as long as they're in their residence. It abuts, and it's under 1,000 square feet. So you can't buy the house next door to you that's 5,000 square feet and say that it's an accessory dwelling and have it. This is for a cottage that belongs to you that happens to be on a separately-deeded street. And those are the only two amendments that we have here.
There are two other minor amendments that we added after my review of the meeting of our zoning enforcement officer and building inspector. And one is just to add that each sleeping room and any furnished basement shall have a window as a point of egress. And the other is that there may be a pre-inspection and a final inspection rather than just one inspection. And that would be included in the application information.
Oh, and the 10, 10 people.
Oh, no, that was in the original.
Oh, what? I thought we changed it from 12 to 10. This, after comments from our zoning administrator and building-
Oh, right, right. This is an amendment to our original passage, so it's 10 people instead of 12.
We gave Airbnb rentals parity with B&amp;Bs. We didn't feel that short-term rentals should have an edge over B&amp;Bs, so we made it no more than 10 people in an Airbnb. That's what's allowed in our, no more than 10 people in a short-term rental, which is the same as our Airbnb law. So you can't have 20-
What's the difference between Airbnb and B&amp;B?
No, no, it's the same as our B&amp;B.
B&amp;B.
Oh, I thought you said Airbnb.
B&amp;B. B&amp;B, the owner has to be on-site, and they serve food. So they have to have a license and an inspection from the County Department of Health. In short-term rentals, Airbnb, Verba, whatever, you don't, you don't have to cook them breakfast, and you don't need a certificate from the Duchess County Department of Health. But we wanted it to be, to have parity with the amount of people that could stay, put them on an equal footing with B&amp;Bs, which has a higher threshold of oversight. You know, this for us is allowing some short-term rentals, but still protecting the quality of life for people who live next door to them.
Small correction. In Paragraph A of Section 4, the word "shall" needs to be stricken through either the first or second line.
I'm sorry. What page, Chauncey?
First page.
I'm sorry, section?
A, Section 4, Paragraph A. Section so-and-so is here by a minute to provide that. Then if you look at the information, the words in the quotation marks, the word "shall" appears twice.
Oh, we have it twice.
Yeah, we need to strike it.
Yeah, I take out the second "shall."
Yes, exactly.
There are a couple of typos in here, but I'm told general code will proofread it.
We'll correct that.
The act corrected.
Tell me about general code. There's some kind of a magical fix to this kind of thing.
They, they proofread it before they codify it.
Oh, and they're allowed to fix it before?
Joan is out.
Not for typographical fields. I didn't know, because I can't make substantial changes.
Does anybody have any comments, questions, or concerns about these further amendments to the amended short-term rental law? I would like to, no comments, questions, everybody? Make a motion to close the public hearing?
So move.
Thank you. Should we tab to? I'd like the motion to approve our amendment to short-term rental local law to be numbered at 2024, for Tab 2. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Alan. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion, comments, questions, gentlemen? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It passes unanimously. This will have to get filed with the Department of State and will become enforceable then. We have already started training our staff with Granicus, the mechanism that oversees this. And we will notice people, and enforcement will probably start by the end of September or October. Oh, I guess I should, I'm sorry, I should do this. We need to vote by roll call. Alan?
Aye.
Chauncey?
Aye.
Lit, and I vote yes as well. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Warren. Is there anything else we need, want? Let's just talk about, there's, on age, there's a discussion items of workforce housing locusts, Hill Seeker, which is our state environmental quality review act. We do have an attorney-client session booked tomorrow with Warren at 10:00 to start reviewing this.
11:00.
Or 11:00.
Or 10:30.
Something close to 10:00. And then we will have a public session probably at our next meeting to re-
Yeah, yeah. The purpose of, we now have all the information and documentation we requested of the applicant, so we're, we're going to be internally reviewing the Part 2 of the Environmental Assessment Form and then discussing, hopefully, if we get through that at the meeting, how we want to formulate the Part 3. And it's quite possible that we'll have that by the September meeting.
Sometime in September or October to go through our-
For the board to fully discuss and vote on.
Publicly. What we have to do is, we requested a lot of documentation from Carney Associates. We need to internally review it with our engineer, attorney, and planner, make sure that all the questions we have are answered, and then we will be discussing it and conducting the quality, environmental quality review publicly. That's-
One of the, you have the IMAs for Red Hook for the housing dogs. I've reviewed that, and it's fine. The current version is everything that you wanted. So you can actually sign that when you approve that.
Anything else for Warren?
No, I don't know.
I think that's, I think that's it.
All right, well, we'll talk to you tomorrow at 10:00, 10:30, or 11:00.
Whatever. Sometime in the morning.
Thank you, Warren.
Obviously, there's an inside story behind all this collateral about the topic.
See you tomorrow.
All right, thank you.
So what time, April?
It's 11:00.
It's 11:00, yeah.
Okay, I'm just going to switch it up. I know we have, it's not an open meeting. It's an attorney-client meeting for us to internally discuss. It's not anything-
I just studied what I was asked.
Oh, we have requested a bunch of additional documentation from Carney Consulting to go through our state environmental quality review act. The meeting with Warren, the town board, our planner and engineer tomorrow is to make sure that everything we requested is there and that we have enough information and answers to our list of questions to publicly begin the seeker, which will be done in public, hopefully at our next meeting or the one after that. All of the seeker will be due publicly. This is a work meeting with our attorney. I know there's someone here who has something she would like to talk about. Instead of taking a, I mean, you're welcome to stay for the whole meeting, Melanie, in case you didn't. I just figured we'd, we'd give you the floor now.
That's great. Do I have to stand up? Would you mind?
All these people.
Would you mind? We can get, that way the public can see you in here.
Where they're going to see you at?
Well, you're going to stand right there by the microphone, and we have a camera over there.
Okay.
All right.
Let's hope.
Yep, it is. Okay, I'm Melody Mullinary, born and raised in Rhinebeck. We'll start with that. I live down by the hospital on Montgomery Street going towards Hogs Bridge. We are having a major problem with 18-wheelers going down the road. It's a three-ton bridge. There's a sign up by the hospital saying, "No trucks over three tons." And there's a sign after the bridge that says, "No three tons." Why it's on that side, I have no idea. The other day, I counted four going across. There was one that went across today. I haven't seen any of the village cops or anybody going by lately, but then again, I'm not home all day either. And I want to, you know, say the speed limit's 30. My house is starting to crack. If it's doing my house on the inside, I don't know what it's doing to my foundation because there's a fault there. I know Marty's house across the street, like their closets are falling apart because, I mean, these trucks pound on that road. And the drainage that goes down, we have no curb, so the rocks are right there on the sidewalk. If anybody drive, I had replaced my front window years ago because the rocks flew up into my picture window. Now they're going on Fitzgerald Door that she just replaced, and it's already chipped. I'd like to have, like I said before, a speed bump like they have up by Maple Valley Farms on the other side of the road.
A speed plateau, not a bump.
Oh, is that what they call it? Plateau, not like that hard one at Williams. Something like that, just to bring attention that you have to slow down. You have people walking, their kids, you have runners, you have cyclists. They don't always go on the sidewalk. There's a big danger there. Like I said years ago, there was a child killed on that road. But the speed doesn't seem to deter anybody to go slow. They just do what they want. What else did I, the drainage is terrible. We haven't had a curb there since they built the sidewalk. I wrote a letter to Steve Solan years ago, and he told the village to fix it and all that, which I know is not the town's problem, but I just want you to aware. The sidewalk, what else do I have here? The speed, cracks on the walls, foundations, bikers, runners, all of that. I just think we really need something, even if you put something on the other side of the bridge where the bump is, or the plateau, or whatever you call it, is not near the housing. So like if somebody flies over it, they don't go on the sidewalk and into somebody's house.
Well, 18-wheelers should not be on the road because of the speed limit.
Well, I hear you.
Weight, weight, speed, the other one.
Right, but also, too, my concern is, like, like I said, with the fair coming next week, those tour buses come across there, and they start at just, they are weighing anywhere from 20,000 to 35,000 pounds. And now you're putting people on that, so that's about 35,000 pounds. And that's coming across that bridge, and they come across there all day long. And it's not only for the fair, it's for the sheep and wool, everything. There's tour buses all the time going down that road. I mean, people come and visit the Beacon Arms, that tour bus is going down that road. And something's got to be done.
I'm thinking quietly. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I, I have often thought, and we have discussed, that we should be stopping traffic from coming up Mount Rudson or Old Post or Middle Road and keeping fair traffic on-
Nine.
Nine and 199. And it may entail us hiring police or working with the fairgrounds to do it. And, you know, I-
You'd have to put somebody at River Road and 199.
Well, you definitely have to have Old Post, too, but, you know, so they can, if they come down now, and they can go around Old Post and get on 92.
Yeah, it needs to be Old Post, Mount Rudson. Needs to be on-
It's not so much the cars that come down, because I know they're going to come that way, and they want to get down to Flat Avenue, get on the park, you know, parking that way and stuff. Instead of doing the big loop, we go into the fair. I get the cars. Everybody, we all drove that road all the time. But the buses shouldn't be there, and, you know, and that's, like you said, the cops should be there. Bus, no, you have to go down that way. And then a lot of them leave the hospital, and they come out the old emergency room entrance and take a right and go down the road. And I saw one coming the other way up by the medical building, take a right and head down the road.
I need to talk to a highway superintendent about the weight limit there and the weight limit on Hogs Bridge and Mount Rudson to see if there is a weight limit on Mount Rudson or if it's just the bridge and-
I have the picture of it on my phone if you want to look at it.
No, I just drove, I, I, Joni told me about this when you called this afternoon. I drove home, checked all the signage.
Well, why the three ton is on the other side of the bridge? I don't know, because there's no other bridges after that going to River Road. So it should be on this side of the bridge. And the bridge is falling apart.
This side of the bridge is the village. We just replaced that bridge.
I know.
We replaced that bridge-
Oh, look at it. I took pictures of that, too. The stones all fall off.
I think it's just the, because I was always on the board when Kathy did that bridge, I think. And it was, it's a facing because she wanted it to look historic.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And I get that. But still, you paid the money to have it look nice, and now it's falling apart. I don't care if it's facing or not. You got to stop the trucks and buses going down there. And I, and I welcome anybody to sit in my driveway all day long and just watch. I really do. Even though the traffic is ungot, the speed is ungot.
Thank you, thank you for coming.
Well, thank you. I appreciate you listening.
Of course.
I want to get something out of this, and I will go to the village about it as well. Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
And I will follow up-
Please do.
With Pete Dunn and Gary and Bob Lyons.
All right, thank you. Thank you for sitting me in.
Of course. Just receive?
Sure.
I need a resolution for 2020, I need a-
Motion.
Thank you. I need a motion for 2024-291, amending resolution 2023-253 for courtroom usage.
Motion.
Thanks, Chauncey. Thanks, Alan. Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. May I have a motion for 2024-292?
Motion.
Thanks, Alan. May I have a second? Thanks, Chaunce. Any comments, questions, or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. I need a motion, I'll make a motion for 2024-293 to approve the IMAs with Red Hook to share our kennel at the Highway Department for housing dogs.
Second.
Thanks.
Excuse us? Where is that going to be located?
Hold on, hold on one second.
Where is the kennel?
The Highway Department.
Okay.
It's, as you go in the Highway Department on the left back towards the salt shed abutting the wetlands. It's a two-kennel enclosure with a fence. So we're sharing it with Red Hook. They don't have one. And they'll share expenses with us and maintain the care of their own dogs. So we're just sharing the shed with them. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. 2024-294, I will make a motion. May I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Alan. This is a search area settlement for Loudon, Dennis Loudon. I don't know if you guys did. I spoke to our assessor, and the assessment was based on four pieces of property. There are only two pieces of property involved, so it's come down, I think, 100 and something thousand, $1,000. Hold on. Yeah. 125,000 because there was a parcel included in it that wasn't a part of the array. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. 2024-295, rescinding resolution to 2024-270 for the skate park bowl. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Alan. May I have a second? We had approved a bowl as an add-on to the skate park, but the proposal that we had was not drawn to scale. And once it was laid out, it was too big for the site. It would have been fringed into the trails and the woods, and we didn't want that. So we're having the smaller, original part, which will be excellent, and that's what we're having. So we're rescinding the approval of the skate bowl because it did not fit. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay, Alan. I need a motion for 2024-296, the highway function class letter of the Duchess County Department of Transportation.
Except I'll support that.
Can I have a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
I know you don't support it, but this is based totally, totally on traffic. It's based on, on, on data points that exist.
Except I think the data's bad.
Okay.
I think we should table this until we figure out what they're going to do with the road.
I disagree. Chaunce?
Caught in the middle. Well, we don't, if Alan votes against it, we don't pass it, obviously.
It passes. We have a majority here.
No, you got to be pretty idiot free.
Right.
He'll vote against it, you'll vote for it. I'll abstain. How's that?
Is that really what you want to do? We just hold up the Department, Duchess County Transportation Department?
I spoke to them, and they don't, they don't really care what we do.
All right, let's table it. I mean, I think it's kind of crazy. It has nothing to do with anything else other than the number of cars it goes on. They've explained to us that they are not going to apply for federal grants because it's a total PETA dealing with, dealing with the federal government. That's the only outcome of this, but fine. Let's just pull it.
Okay.
Got that, Joni?
Got it.
Okay. 2024-297, amending the electric car purchase resolution for 2024-272. I will make a motion. May I have a second?
Second.
Thanks. The only thing this is, is that we got an ICERTA to agree to let us purchase a Volkswagen, which is less expensive than the Kia, and it was on a state contract. So it's about $8,000 less than what we were going to spend. And we have $25,000 worth of grants for this. So we're purchasing an electric vehicle for our zoning, building departments, also to be used by town mall employees when we have to run down to the county or anything. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? I'll make a motion for 2024-299, hiring a clerk for-
298, Captain.
I need a charger.
Oh, okay. Sorry. 224-298, purchase and install an EV charger for the car we just approved. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Thanks, may I have a second?
Second.
Thanks. All in favor? Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So move. I'll make a motion for 2024-299, hiring a clerk for Justice Rubenstein. May I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I need to make an amendment to this. Person we are hiring, Heather Harwood, is already a clerk at another municipality. So I'd like to strike in the resolve that Heather Harwood be approved. I'd like to strike pending background check and pick up for 20 hours per week, starting August 13th, et cetera, et cetera, because she is currently a clerk and has already passed a background check, and we don't have to do it again. Is everybody okay with the-
And it also saves us some money.
Yes, and time.
Yeah.
So everybody's fine with the amendment to the resolution? All in favor of the resolution?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. I'd like to take the next three, 2024-300.
I'll approve if they need to be entered into the law.
Oh, thank you, Jim. I'd like a motion for 2024-300, reaffirming the town's procurement policy. May I have a motion?[1799.78]
Motion.
Second.
Is this by roll count, Joan?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Passes unanimously. 2024-301, reaffirming the town's sexual harassment policy.
Motion.
Second.
Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Passes unanimously. 2024-302, reaffirming the town's workplace violence policy.
Motion.
Second.
Any comments or questions?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. 2024-303, may I have a motion to hire the health director for recreation?
Motion.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Passes unanimously. May I have a motion for 2024-304, approving our 2024-25 turf field maintenance agreement?
Motion.
Second.
This is one year, we're signing up for one year, for two visits a year. Reason why we're not doing multi-years is the cost isn't that different than if we find another vendor, what we'd like to be able to change. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Passes unanimously. I'd like a motion for 2024-305, approving the camp refund.
Motion.
Second.
I'll take Chauncey and Debbie and Alan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Just for the public, really the only reason we do this is for health, medical reasons. 2024-306, I need a motion to approve tennis net purchases.
Second.
Thank you, Alan. Thank you, Chauncey. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Passes unanimously. I'd like a motion for 2024-307, to approve pavilion restroom cleaning service contract.
Motion.
Second.
Any, any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Passes unanimously. I'd like to approve the deal memo or contract, Studio Oakland, for pollinator garden consultation, oversight, and labor management, especially to mitigate our mudwort infestation. All in favor?
Aye.
I mean, I need a motion.
Need a motion.
Thanks, Alan. Thanks, Chauncey. Any questions for?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? Passes unanimously. I need a motion for 2024-309 for preliminary accounts payable abstracts.
Motion.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously. And I need a motion for 2024-310, our capital projects abstract.
Motion.
Second.
Are there any comments or questions? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously. Are there any, is there any new business from anyone on the town board? Are there any questions, comments, concerns from anyone in the audience?
This workforce housing would discuss every about having.
Seeker, attorney-client seeker.
We have tomorrow.
I would like to make a motion to go into executive session to discuss a matter regarding the compensation and sick time of specific, of two specific employees and the hiring of a specific entity.
Can you do a motion?
No.
Sorry.
Okay, we'll be back, and I don't think we'll do any further business after that. This is for discussion. Oh, we might do, we might do business. We might, we might. We'll be back. We don't have any further business, so. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, thanks, everybody. We'll see you in September. Bye-bye.
Oh, jeez.